Called to order, Town of North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority in regular Town Council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 at 7:08 PM. We'll start with the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay? How are you tonight?
I'm well.
Good to see you over here today, dealing with us. If you wouldn't mind providing roll call, appreciate it.
Of course.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lee O'Gough.
Here.
Councillor Adelson.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Mace.
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to, I'll accept a motion for item two, minutes of previous meetings, A, April 18th, 2023, regular Town Council meeting.
So moved with one correction on page 14 of the minutes. The first sentence, it should be Councillor Mace agreed with Ms. Salzo. So that just needs to be corrected.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Councillor Adelani, seconded by Councillor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Obstained? Thank you. Okay. On to Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, item three, correspondence, citizen statements. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, unfinished business. I see none here. On to item five, new business. Likewise, I see none. And under six, citizen statements and petitions. Seeing none, we'll move on. As a productive Water Protection Authority Agenda, on to regular Town Council meeting. Item seven, Town Manager Report. Michael.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Our new Assistant Town Manager Rory Burke started with us on Monday. He returned on Tuesday, so that's a good sign.
Yeah.
As you know, Rory will be heading up our Economic Development and Human Resources for the town. He has a terrific background in municipal government, and he comes to us from the town of Seymour, where he most recently served as CAO. He's here tonight, and I'd like to introduce him.
Welcome.
Welcome, sir. Godspeed.
Rory's been meeting with our town staff and getting acclimated over the last couple of days, and he's begun the process of evaluating our employee onboarding and offboarding process, and has already begun work on some special projects for us.
Does he have an office?
He does. So where the registrars used to be, that's his office.
Okay.
They built that out of cardboard. It's really nice.
Yeah.
No, it's the desk.
This is his desk.
Yeah, that's his desk. All right, well, welcome, Rory. We appreciate you coming to North Branford and dealing with our crazy little town. I think you're going to like this place. It's a good home to be in. So thank you for being here.
The new town website is now live and active at northbranfordct.gov. The URL of the old website redirects to the new one. I've received a lot of positive resonant feedback on the new site, and we continue to give it little tweaks and tune-ups along the way. The Town of North Branford's Budget Referendum will be held on May 9th, 2023. The polling places are District 1, Jerome Harrison Elementary School, 335 Foxen Road; District 2, Stanley T. Williams Community Center Gymnasium at 1332 Middletown Avenue; and District 3, also a Stanley T. Williams Community Center but in the Board of Education Meeting Room at 1332 Middletown Avenue. Hours of voting are 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. In accordance with Chapter 8-5 of the North Branford Town Charter, only registered voters are eligible to vote in the Budget Referendum. Absentee ballots are available at the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours and have been as of April 24th. The Town's Memorial Day Parade will be held on Monday, May 29th, at 10:00 AM in the North Branford section of town. The invitation is extended to everyone who wishes to march on that day. Groups will form on Commerce Drive off of Route 80 at 9:00 AM. The parade line will start at 9:30 AM and step off at 10:00 AM sharp. The parade will proceed on Route 80 toward the North Branford Congregational Church. Anyone who has a family member or acquaintance who is a deceased veteran is invited to carry a picture of that person in our Memorial Day Parade to honor their memory. All are invited to Company 1 Firehouse at 1531 Foxen Road after the ceremony for refreshments. Special thanks go to Kathy Poston and Gina Cox, who are once again organizing the parade with the critical support of our Public Works Police and Fire Department.
Mike, you want to remind me, interjecting really quickly?
Sure.
So it's, I've always found that our parade's a sense of pride for North Branford. It's a lot of fun to everyone get together and enjoy one another, and of course memorialize those who fought for us. But I encourage those people that are listening in and out in the crowd here tonight to come out to the parade, be part of the parade, be inventive, go to Gina and Kathy, and if there's something you want to bring in, if you have an old car, or something you'd like to show, or something unique, tractor, you know, be part of the parade. The longer the parade, the more fun it is for the kids. It was something I remember growing up and seeing. Tom, do you remember back in the 1800s when you were in those, Chris? When he would, when you would see these things. It was a lot of fun to have, and obviously both sides of the town get to benefit. Last year, Northford side, this year it's North Branford. So I encourage everyone to come out and to participate. It's a really great event for our town. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Last Thursday was Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. We were pleased to have a handful of children of Town Hall employees come to work with their parents. None of them wanted to be a Town Manager, but one of them definitely wanted to be a tax collector. It was a fun event that I look forward to expanding with our town employees in future years. Our Park and Rec Department is sponsoring our annual Touch a Truck event on May 20th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM with a quiet time of 12:30 to 1:00 PM at the Stanley T. Williams Parking Lot. The Park and Rec Junk in Your Trunk event, which was scheduled for Saturday, April 29th, was postponed due to the heavy rains we experienced last weekend. A new date will be set for this event, and owing to a pretty packed schedule, it's likely to be sometime in the fall. Another park and rec news, one of the hydrangea trees was oddly stolen from in front of Stanley T. Williams this past Saturday.
Like ripped out of the grant.
Yeah, they have the car there. The guy, I mean, what's going on there?
Surveillance footage caught the incident, and it was reported to the police.
If you need a tree that bad, come to us. We'll find a way.
In my mind, that was like somebody was landscaping over the weekend, and they were like, I'm one short. I know there's one.
Ben Wilson's closed early.
Well, actually, those hydrangea trees, because there's two of them that were part of the Poco Fest for last year, those were donated by Sister Malillo from Malillo's Greenhouse purposely for, to use at the Poco Fest, and then they were planted up at the community center in honor of Joanne Wentworth. And it was over, like, by the area that is donated in her memory and stuff, and it's really sad that someone had to rip it out of the grant.
Yeah, it's odd.
To take it, and it was donated also.
So we did have, we did have an anonymous citizen replace it.
Really?
So, yeah.
Well, that's very nice.
So that is nice. They wish to remain anonymous, but we thank them for that. And if anyone has any information on the theft, obviously, we urge them to contact the North Branford Police Department at 203-484-2703. It's that time of year again to get your free sunflower seeds to plant for the season. They should be available in the coming week at North Branford Public Libraries, the Park and Rec Department, North Branford Town Hall, and at North Branford High School outside the greenhouse. North Branford Rotary Club is sponsoring a paper shredding event on May 6th at Town Hall between the hours of 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM. If you have old documents or clutter you need to dispose of, the cost is $10 a banker's box. And on a personal note, I find myself all too soon once again extending thanks to the members of the Town Council, town employees, and friends who have reached out to express their condolences on the passing of my mother, Judith Muller, a week ago. It really is her fault that I'm here, because she moved here to town with me as a baby to a new development called Conifer Drive back in 1973.
Conifer Drive.
And she loved living in this town very much, and we loved her very much, and she'll be missed.
Bless.
That concludes my report.
Thanks for that, Mike. Appreciate that. And certainly our condolences to you and your mom passing. Okay, on to item B, Permanent Projects Building Committee. Nothing better to get you going than Permanent Projects Building Committee.
Yes.
That'll make either laugh or cry.
I'll keep this brief, and hopefully we'll do neither. Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the roof is completed, but the fascia and trim are on order, so the full completion is expected mid-June, but it isn't closed and the roof is completed. Police Department and EOC, the site work at the location continues, and the concrete pouring has begun. North Branford Intermediate School, the project has had the bid moved back to May 17th. And the North Branford High School, the items on the punch list continue to be worked through. The Phase 2 abatement has begun, and this will continue through the month of May with the demolition of the remaining section scheduled to start at the end of the month or into the beginning of June. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay. On to item eight, Community Events and Presentations. Item A, presentation by Michelle Lesso of Seward Monday of June 2022 FYE audit. Fun stuff. How are you? Thank you.
I apologize for not having these two at the last meeting. We had talked about having Michelle come in for the next meeting, and my game plan was to give these documents to you tonight, but due to some scheduling conflicts, she's very late. So you have the digital copy to review, and please record that.
Great, thank you.
Good evening and thank you. It's actually nice to see some familiar faces from the last time we used to do the audit four years ago. So obviously, we do have a history with North Branford, and that actually helped getting the late start and also dealing with the intensive munis thing that has been going on at Town Hall and the Board of Ed, taking up a lot of the Finance Department's time. But I do want to thank Anthony and Martha, along with their staff and their employees within the town for their assistance and cooperation during this past audit. I'll go over some quick highlights and comments. If anybody has any questions, I'll address them today, or when you have a chance to read the hard copy, or if you have any questions after that, please feel free to contact me directly or through Anthony.
Thank you.
It is an unmodified, clean opinion on the governmental activities, business-type activities each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Town of North Branford. There's no material noncompliance with laws and regulations reported, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over financial reporting. We performed also a federal single audit under uniform guidance requirements. Again, that's an unmodified, clean opinion on the compliance over the major programs. North Branford expended just shy of $2.3 million in the past fiscal year, and we continue to receive additional funding for education through the Esser Grants, as well as your local funding that will start being the ARPA funds that will be spent over the next several years. We also performed a state single audit, as we do every year. Again, an unmodified, clean opinion on compliance with those programs. North Branford expended just shy of $8.9 million in state assistance. Significant amount of that is for education cost sharing and excess cost grants. Your bonded debt, including capital leases, stands at about $25.2 million, with annual debt service approximating about $4 million. That's about 8% of your overall town budget. Your net pension liability increased $2.3 million to $4.4 million. That's combined for the three defined benefit plans of the town. There was actually a minimal increase in the total pension liability, however, due to market declines that we saw for that last fiscal year, that really increased the overall liability, and that I've seen across the board in most municipalities and other clients this past fiscal year. The net OPEB liability increased about $750,000. Again, a stable OPEB, total OPEB liability, and small market declines in benefit payments. Your general fund, overall fund balance stood at $11.9 million. It's about 20.3% of your '22-'23 budget, a decrease of about $370,000. And that's your overall fund balance target that's been approved is basically 15%. It's obviously not a floor or ceiling. It's what you are looking to keep your fund balance at. The unassigned fund balance was at $8.3 million, 14.1% of the '22-'23 budget with a 10% target. That was a decrease of about $2 million from the prior year due to an increase in the amount that was committed to the '22-'23 budget in using the fund balance as opposed to increasing the tax rate. On the budget-to-actual statements, revenues overall were about $171,000 over budget, and expenditures were under budget by $864,000. Generally, all departments showing some cost savings. Those kind of conclude my general comments. Like I said, if anybody has any specific questions or general questions, happy to answer those.
So on our debt service, we were at, what was it? We were at like 25?
It's about $4 million is your annual debt service between principal interest on your bonded debt and capital leases.
And that's, what, was that a, did you give it a percentage of?
It's about 8% of your total.
And how does that rank with other, I don't know, towns, or as an average?
I'd have to do a little bit more research on that. Some are a lot lower, some are a lot higher.
Oh, depends on your projects.
And it depends on where your capital projects stand, too. Obviously, you have some big projects going on right now, so.
And this is the end of last fiscal year, also?
This is the end of last fiscal year.
Right, okay.
I apologize. I might have missed it. Do you, at some point, audit what we do with the ARPA funds?
Yes, that, well.
Does that come at the end, or?
It depends. So it's a federal grant, so we have to audit your federal grants if you expend over $750,000 in total. Then there's another calculation to determine which programs are major and have to be tested. Depending on if you spend a certain amount, we might have to test that specifically, or we might not have to. In this past fiscal year, we actually tested National School Lunch Program at the Board of Ed, as well as the Esser Funds at the Board of Ed, which was mandated by the State Department of Education to test it as a major program.
What's, what Esser?
Yeah, it's additional education, elementary school funding from the federal government, part of the whole COVID funding.
Oh.
And that will run out in the next few years. It was just a temporary program.
So you audit all of the grants that the Board of Ed gets?
Correct, correct. In some fashion. We might not delve into all of them specifically, but we do kind of touch them all when we go over there.
So is that a $750,000 total, or is it not per?
No, it's total. So.
So anything over $750,000, so we?
No, no. If you, you are required to have a federal single audit if your expenditures in total are over $750,000. So you're at 8. What was it? Almost $9 million. Sorry?
It's just not ARPA funds.
2.3 million. So of that 2.3 million, there's, based on federal regulations, kind of a formula, because there's also a risk assessment on the programs, of which ones we have to test. So we don't have to test 100% for compliance. We have to test specific ones. Obviously, we're not going to test one that's $2,000.
So you had mentioned, I think you had mentioned that our fund balance is around 11%? Was it 11% or 11 million?
So your overall fund balance is about $11.9 million.
And our, and the goal was, is 15?
Is 15. It's, your target's 15%. That percent actually comes out to 20.3.
Oh, okay. So does that say we're, does that, does that tell us anything? Like, we're either in bad shape, good shape, or just?
Actually, pretty much in better shape.
Oh, okay.
If you're under your target of 15%, you'd be, I don't want to say in bad shape, but you're under your target.
Good.
You would be under your target, but you are over your.
So there's the fund balance, and then there's the undesigned.
Correct.
There's two different ones.
There's again, it's still over your target.
Right.
Okay. So if our, if our target's 15, and we're at?
15%.
Okay, 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 okay.
15% of your budget, of your expenditure budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your time and for the energy you put into this. Very much appreciated. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight at 7:30 that we're going to be opening, so we really have, you know, two and a half minutes here before we open that up. Really, I don't think there's anything to go into quickly. I guess I can, well, I could see if there's someone that has a statement, and we have to give them more than a minute and a half.
I have a quick one.
Go ahead. Got a joke to tell us?
I think we have a terrific volunteer fire department. I think they do outstanding work. But based on a recent incident that I had within my neighborhood, I would just like to make a suggestion that we, maybe we do this in the website, that we tell people, particularly senior citizens, that they ought to think about getting a lockbox that they can put, attach to the front of their house near their front door with a key, and then give the dispatcher the code. That way, firemen don't have to spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to get into a home if somebody's not home, or if somebody's incapacitated. I've talked to Anthony about that. I know a number of my neighbors have called Anthony. And it's unfortunate that then, if there isn't a way, the firemen have to somehow break into the home, you know, in various manners. And I know in the particular incident I'm talking about, they tried everything under the sun, but they finally had to break in through the front door. So I just think it would be a nice suggestion to put in the website, that people think about, I know I'm going to do it, getting a lockbox, putting the key in it, and then calling the dispatcher, which I understand is something you can do, give the dispatcher the code, so then if a police or fire are going to their home, the dispatcher will give the code to get into that lockbox. I just think it's, I think it's a great thing to.
Not a bad idea. Yeah, it's a smart decision. Well, it's just something that's safe enough for people to feel that their, you know, that their entryway is not compromised by someone to smack the box open. But I guess you could do that with a door anyway, right? Or a window. So, yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion. Okay.
And I thank Anthony for his help on that, because we had a lot of nervous neighbors as a result of.
Of course. Yeah, makes sense.
It's a, it's a great suggestion. I'll tell you from personal experience that I got my mother a lockbox for her door the day that the ambulance had to come for her. That morning, I was over there with the lockbox, and I said, "No, just give me your key." But she couldn't remember where the key was. So we left it on the counter, and it was like, "Well, we'll take care of it later." And like, you know, four hours later, they had to break in through her door to get her. So it's a great suggestion, and I almost tried to do it. But you need the key, though, to do.
The thought was there.
Yeah.
I just have one quick thing. I would just like to congratulate the superintendent's son, Luke Schoonmaker, who was drafted in the second round for the NFL. He was picked number 58. He's a tight end, and he will be going to the Dallas Cowboys.
About the Cowboys.
So congratulations to Luke and his family. I think that's very exciting news, you know, to have, you know, the superintendents of the school system, his son. And I congratulate Scott and Luke and the whole family on this accomplishment.
Number 58, that's not a.
That's a heck of a draft pick.
That's a, that's a.
That's significant.
Yeah, you got to be pretty good.
Ground to, so that was very, very good.
While we're making announcements, I'd just like to acknowledge that one of the high school lacrosse players was seriously injured about a week ago, very good friends with the family, Shane Esposito. He was injured in a practice and subsequently had to have a kidney removed because of it. He's a strong kid. He's a fighter. He's working really hard to get better. He's up and moving around. He's making progress.
I saw that.
I know that they're very stressful on the family, and I'd just like to say from the Town Council level that we wish him, Shane, a lot of luck on his recovery. Stay strong, and we'll see you out there again soon, so.
Absolutely. And again, thanks to the Fire Department for being there quickly to, to help with that. So God spews space, safe recovery. Okay, we're going to jump into the public hearing. So we're going to open up 7:30 PM, public hearing, proposed ordinance number 2023-3 pursuant to C-7-3 Purchasing Agent. Okay, so we can open it up for public comment?
Do you want the notice, right?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, yes, right, right. Don't have it in front of me. Please, open, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Notice of Public Hearing. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance 2023-3, which is pursuant to Section C-7-3 of the Town Charter, establishes the position of purchasing agent as summarized below. The position of purchasing agent shall replace the position of purchasing assistant. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 18th day of April, 2023, Lisa Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk, emailed public comments to public-comment@townofnorthbranfordct.com, and it was published in The Sound on April 27th, 2023.
Thank you, Councillor. Okay, now opening it up to public comment. Seeing that there's none, Anthony, can you check really quickly if there's any comment online?
Stand by.
Thank you, sir.
No comments on table.
Okay. Fine, we're okay to close and end, no motion. Okay, so I will accept a motion.
So, so moved.
Second.
All right, so do you want to just quickly read this, if you wouldn't mind, Councillor Diamond, this is the suggested motion?
Well, no, it's under new business.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, it's a 12.
Yeah, so we're just.
Oh, my bad. Yep, we're right. We're closing it out. We got it. Correct, correct. Thank you. I'm going to just flip my page here. Okay. All right, so motion by Councillor Adelani to close out public hearing, seconded by, sorry, motion by Councillor Diamond, seconded by Councillor Adelani. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Obstained? Okay, we're out of public comment and out of the public hearing. On to item nine, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Do we have any? Hello, sir?
Flipper Northford, I'd like, most people, if you've got a cell phone, go to the North Branford Recreation Department. They've got that video. The tree's been replaced, but the hurt to communities feeling hasn't been. That's, I don't know, I was mad when I saw that video. The guy is so brazen. I mean, I guess we're getting hardened to, oh, another catalytic converter, you know, you hear, but this is ridiculous. The man should not get away with it. It's very clear, somebody, someplace has to know this man, and the park and rec has it on their site. Go on Facebook, go on Park and Rec, blow it up. He's wearing stripes on his sweatshirt. There must be something about him, a fairly new Chevrolet, white pickup with fancy wheel. You've got to recognize this guy somehow. He can't get away with it. I mean, there's no respect for public property. We're going to new lows every day, and it hurts. This town is not that way. We have families that have lost loved ones. We've had people that are hurt. We care, and we don't put up with this. So again, that's one thing I'd like to see done. I don't think I can literally call him a scumbag, because that wouldn't be proper, would it, sir?
Stricken from the record, right?
Yeah.
Getting back to the Memorial Day Parade, I'm working with Kathy. I have a large form you can fill out, and we're working to organize the tractors and how we're going to line them up and so forth and so on. And so they're on the town website, thanks to somebody who's more skilled than I have. They're on the Rec Commission's website. I'll leave some at the Rec Commission, and if you fill it out, it's got my email. If you don't have email, you can drop it off at the senior center. We'll get the lineup. We'll get the lineup. So when you're on the reviewing stand and they're going by you, and every year we get it wrong, so I don't care, but you know what I'm saying? It's an honest attempt. I only have one tractor. We have people with 10s, 15 tractors. So at the last minute, they might bring a different one that's on the form. It gets a little confusing, but it's all good time.
Fun time.
It's a fun time, but it's a serious time. By the time we get to the town, the church there, you know, we want to be in a proper reverence to reprimand, remember. And also Luke Scho, Mr., yes, how you say his last name?
Schoonmaker.
Schoonmaker. He was also, I believe, a Marine, right?
No, that's the second one.
Oh, he's got his other one, okay.
We thank him too.
Yeah, he's the oldest.
Yeah.
But it, I'm, you know.
Yeah, yes.
Small town superintendent's son makes big. It's, it's nice. I mean, and, and the whole family was there to congratulate him. That, that was warm to see that.
Yeah.
And so again, we don't do a lot in this town, but what we do, we support people and if we can catch this gentleman, I changed the verbiage, catch him because he shouldn't get away with this. And I believe in karma. I think the tree's going to die, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And leave one of those forms with the town manager down, he wants to bring his Toro ride on.
Honestly, I'd like him a personal ride before.
I've got a leftover for my son, I've got a Fisher Price one, but.
That would be, I'll tell you this.
There's colored balls that fly around.
The town would really appreciate that.
Okay, you're on.
That's an excellent idea. Please mark that down as something that we're doing. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Potter. Appreciate it. Are there any other citizen statements? All right, seeing none, we're going to, I am going to item 10, resignations and appointments. I don't have any on the agenda tonight. On to item 11, unfinished business discussion in action. Item A, discussion in action to create town blueprint committee to advise, assist, and formulate execution of town plan and blueprint. So now that we're past budget season, sort of, almost there after referendum, I'd like to start to formulate this and come up with an idea, maybe next meeting or the first in June, start to build out what it would look like and how it, and we'll work with Brian to see what we need to do to build out the committee, what kind of components will be needed. So let's, we'll push on it for this, this meeting, but let's have it on next meeting's agenda and start to, to get this put together.
Well, yeah, because I think we need to, like, approve this.
To have it.
The resolution because in there it states, like, who is on it from town council planning and, and let, once this is approved, then we can let those other committees know because they're going to have to appoint.
Someone from each one of those.
At those meetings and depending on how often they meet, that could take a little while.
Yeah, I think, I think the first was going to be a quarterly type of thing or it could be much like pension, but we can, we can certainly change that.
That's the way it was drafted, of course, it's up to you to, to modify.
Yeah.
Submit it to you and there's the deadline also to report out to you. That's certainly a movable target.
Can you add that to our packet for next time as well so we can review it again?
Sure.
Thank you. Does that sound good for everyone? Start to get onto that? Okay, great. All right, we move on from there. On to item B, review of trash recycling contract, John's refuse.
The update on that is, it's been turned over to the town attorney. He's currently working on getting the agreement drafted up between us and John's, making the necessary adjustments for years three, four, and five, and that will be before you, we should have it for, for the next meeting, right?
Attorney clerk, that's looking good? Okay, thank you, sir.
The only thing is to add the bulk pickup, correct?
Correct.
Nothing else is changing in the contract.
It's just an amendment for the bulk pickup.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, okay.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you. All right, and then on to, yet again, discussion creation of the 1831 committee. This is more of a reminder, but something we do want to attack soon enough. Michael, what was your thought process on getting that together? You thinking that's in August or something sooner?
I mean, I think you've got a lot of lead time on this, obviously.
Yeah.
It's just something to be flagged out here for, for your consideration. I mean, you're going to want to probably act on it within the next year or two, I would think, just so if you're planning on, you know, if there's, if there's a vision to do some large celebration, you want to have the mechanism set up where there could be some fundraising done on behalf of it and generate some funds so that by the time you actually get there, you know, you have a plan.
Do we want this to coincide with the POCO in some way? Is that some of the thought process or is that something more of a?
It can be, I mean.
I think it would make sense to have it coincide with something, maybe add an extra day or something to the capacity, bring in maybe a larger music act or something, something salvatory.
I think that's what the committee.
Yeah. Would discuss that.
Right.
Okay. All right, why don't we keep it on the agenda for now and we'll start to form this as well? I think it's, the more lead time we have on it, the better.
Right.
Something we want to make sure we do right. And we have all the background on what was done in '82, was it, or?
We have a lot in the town clerk's archives, yeah, from, from 1981.
Can you pull that together or put a packet together?
We can. It's, it's pretty sizable.
Is it?
Yeah. So I would, I would.
Maybe you just have one in your office.
We could pull some, yeah, we could pull some choice items for you to kind of get a taste of.
Like, just to get a flavor of.
Yeah, exactly. Like a, yeah, like Cliff Notes.
I think all the full documentation we have would probably be best reviewed by the committee that you, you create.
Let's do a Cliff Notes of that for the first meeting in June.
Sure.
And we, let's see, June, is it July we do only one or August, we only do one meeting?
July.
July, right? We do one meeting in July. All right, so we got the two in June. Okay, so we'll do it for the first meeting in June. Okay, all right. Everyone's good to move on? Folks over here, good? Okay, on to item 12, new business discussion in action. Item A, discussion action proposal ordinance 2023-3 pursuant to C-7-3 purchasing agent. We do have a motion that is in front of us, so we'd accept a motion.
No, that's not the motion. This is for the, to set a public hearing.
Oh, I'm looking.
It's in here, no. No, I, I look through, there's.
Oh, I thought there was a motion for it.
No, that's.
See, I have it right here.
No, that, that's to set, that was what, when we had to set the public hearings, the proposed motion. Though that just set the public hearing, that doesn't.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right.
It doesn't.
Oh, yeah, so we have to, it might have been printed wrong.
It doesn't approve, so I guess.
Mike, is this?
There's no motion in our packet.
No, you're right.
You're right, there's, there is no proposed motion.
So.
We could, we could build one right now.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-3 pursuant to C-7-3 purchasing agent. And that is to change the title from purchasing assistant to purchasing agent.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni.
Second.
Second by Counselor Diamond. Is there any discussion?
I'll speak against it.
You're welcome, gentlemen.
I was hoping to hear a new argument tonight so I could support a motion like this, but I didn't hear any new argument as to how this benefits town itself, although it benefits the employee. And the only thing I could read into the reason why is that they do an outstanding job in the service of our town. Well, if that's true, then all of those people who do an outstanding service to this town get slighted because they don't get a title promotion. So I just think this is unfair and not good for the morale for the rest of the working community for Norfolk. And I haven't heard any argument that I could switch my vote tonight.
I think I'd propose an argument that this is more of a cleanup or a change in, in language than it is anything other than, I mean, the job that is presented is being already done by this particular person in this capacity, even in the prior position. Technically, town manager is denoted as purchasing agent and that particular position is assistant purchasing agent, but a lot of the purchasing runs through that particular position. So it's cleaning it up to be a little, Brian, would you agree to be a little bit more in line with what the charter says?
Yeah, it makes it more consistent title of the agent for the town. That's the role and function.
And particularly when we're going out to bid and we're speaking with, you know, outside entities, it has a, it speaks higher per se to they recognize his capabilities versus, you know, wanting to talk to the purchasing agent. Well, he is the purchasing agent, even though entitled. Michael, if you would.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, so I, I guess the way I would respond to that is never at any point did I characterize this introduction as being good for the employee or just because the employee was doing a good job, that has nothing to do with this at all. This would be akin to right now, if you were working for your law firm and you had to have the title of paralegal, but do a lawyer's job. Right now, he's doing the job of a purchasing agent. That position is. If I could, if I could have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
No, 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 this is point of order. Point of order is more recognized than his speech, okay? This is point of order. A motion is on the floor, has been seconded.
Mm-hmm.
I spoke against it. When a motion is on the floor, the only people who could really speak for or against it are the members of the town council, not the person from the audience, okay? You ask the council if it was his legal advice about something, fine, but to have the town manager, who's not a member of the town council, to speak in favor of the motion, I think is out of order.
I think it was more of, let, or, Brian, if you would.
In your charter, section 6.2, the town manager shall attend meetings of the council with full right of participation and in its discussions. No right to vote.
Michael, carry on.
The rules of procedure are adopted by the council most recently in 1999.
Okay, so charter indicates that.
But also, it also says that we will go by Robert's Rules of Order. Now, Robert's Rules of Order is certainly.
Robert's Rules of Order is a, is a, an outline to a charter. The charter is.
The charter and the joint rules of this council supersede Robert's rules.
Correct.
Robert's rules is a backstop.
So, Michael, please, carry on.
You disagree all you want, but you're wrong.
Hey.
All right, so I believe there's a good explanation as to why. If it doesn't suffice, you certainly, obviously, always have the ability to vote how you feel is best and to, to your constituency. So I, I obviously offer you to do that and if there's any other discussion, seeing none, we have a second, we have a motion and a second. We'll move this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Carries, thank you. And we thank our new purchasing agent entitled for all the efforts and that he does put in place here. For my effort.
Chairman, if I may just further, under your rules, section seven, the town manager has the right to speak at all council meetings.
Correct.
If you look at section 17 of your rules, it does note that Robert's rules shall be the parliamentary authority of the council, except as otherwise provided by these rules. So there is a carve-out, and that carve-out not only occurs in charge, but in the rules itself.
Correct.
As town manager has the ability to speak and participate, just not vote.
Thank you.
Which I say, by a minimum, because I disagree with that interpretation.
Well, it's the interpretation of our charter.
I know, but.
Well, we'll agree to disagree.
Can I just say something?
You play.
I think, I think the town manager is more intricately involved in the day-to-day operations, obviously, of the town, his opinions and information that he brings to the meetings is invaluable and I don't think at any point in time it should be discounted. And I'm welcome to hear whatever he has to say at any point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I tend to agree. Okay, we're going to move on. That is, has been amended and we are going to move on to item B, potential revision of chart, chapter 104 of the Code of Ordinances, air pollution control. Anthony?
Good evening.
Make sure you're in order, but go ahead.
Chapter 104 of the Code of Ordinances talks about air pollution control, particularly the open burning aspect is, is kind of a touchy situation. I'd like to bring Deputy Fire Marshal John O'Brien up. You'll see on page 35 of your tablet is the current section 104, chapter 104, and then on page 38, you'll see a lot of redlined version that John worked on. This was forwarded to Brian and have received his tweaking in a couple of spots and has been blessed. But I'll let John talk about the history on what prompted this requirement to modify this Code of Ordinance.
Good evening. The open burning, it's called air pollution control, but it's actually open burning ordinance. The ordinance comes back in 1978, so we, last couple of years, we've tried to update it to more mirror what the state DEP recommends. So that's with the changes that are in here. Everything in black that you have is the original ordinance and the red are the updates. And basically, we made it so it's, it's, it's more updated to what's going on with, at the state level and also gives us more authority when somebody disregards what they're supposed to be doing. It also has some legalese stuff in here to protect everybody. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Well, was there, so what was it, what's it right now? How, how does it work right now for an open burn?
So right now, we, at the Fire Marshal Office, we go by the state DEP regulations, but the town ordinance is less restrictive. So there have been occasions where a town resident has been burning something that they're not supposed to by the state regulations. So we investigate and we tell them that they're not allowed to burn and they say by the town ordinance, it's okay. So we're trying to get everything in line, saying that, well, it's not okay.
Right.
If the state DEP says it's no good, then it's no good.
Because I was in the impression, just from my own personal, like, if I wanted, if I wanted to burn something, I would call and find out if I can burn or not. And I, I remember doing it. It's been 20 years since I've done it, but I'd call and say, it's either yes or no. If I can, I can burn. If not, I can't.
Right, and that's with the state DEP regulations. That's not with the town ordinance. I mean, we've been doing it with, following the state regulations for years, but every once in a while, you have a, a town resident that challenges you.
So, so, hold on a second. So what, what I just described is, is following the state?
State, but not town.
Look, because I, I don't, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, that's, that's how I always understood it.
Does state ordinance supersede town ordinance? Or is town ordinance, how's the, what's the hierarchy?
State.
State, correct? That's what I thought.
But I don't remember getting a, well, I know I didn't get a permit, I just got an okay. Right, I think it's important to go over the, the whole permit process. If someone wants to burn in their yard, there's only things that are, certain things are eligible to burn. Right. You can't burn leaves, you can't burn construction materials. But people tend, as John mentioned, there've been some instances, people try to burn things that aren't really allowed, but they have no teeth to say, they look at the town ordinance and say, well, I can burn it based on this, and these guys are in a tough spot because they're saying, no, really, you can't burn it because the state's saying you can't burn it. So it's kind of a conflict and we're trying to resolve by bringing it all on the same page. So the process, if you want to burn, you call the Fire Marshal's office. Yeah. Give me your address.
He comes.
John fills out a permit, he goes and inspectors, you're not burning anything that's illegal.
Yeah.
The day you want to burn, you then call the police department, say, hey, I'm Tom Zampano, I got a permit number 1345. Is it okay to burn? Dispatch will say yes or no. Okay. And then you do what you want to do.
That makes sense.
Always out there and things like that.
It's always been the cadence that I followed when I.
So you just want to bring the two into agreement?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So there's no conflict, they get on the scene, they're saying, yeah, we can't do it, can't do it, it's.
It's common sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just, so I understood it.
I mean, very rarely we have a problem.
But you want to have it right in...
We have, want to have everything written in writing because the state regulations are more stricter than what we have in the present burning ordinance. And it also is a nuisance ordinance. So say, even though you have a permit to burn and you're burning in your backyard, if your neighbor next door has asthma and they're complaining because the smoke's going into their house or something like that, you have to put it out.
Of course.
So there's, it's a nuisance portion of it in there.
Yeah.
So we, you know, this way we can stop people that think they can just do whatever they want.
I just have one question. Once you get a permit to burn, is that it? Do you have to reapply at any point in time, or do you...
The permit, we give out the permits for 30 days, okay? Because of weather and everything else, you may not be able to burn.
But it's one instance, or it's during that entire time? So you can...
During a 30-day time period.
You could do it several times during that time period?
Yes.
Well, you have to call each time, right?
You have to call each agent each time. So this way you don't get the, the nuisance alarms, you know, oh, I smell, I smell smoke in the area, it's have to send out the police or fire department, and then somebody that has a legitimate permit to burn.
That makes sense.
So before you issue the permit, do you actually go out to the residents and take a look?
The majority would do. When we issue the permits, most of the people are people that get them all the time. So say you have a permit to burn. So first time you get it, I go out there, see what you're doing, make sure you follow all the regulations. If 30 days you need a renewal, we renew it for you. You come back next year. If we haven't had any problems with you, we may or may not go out. Because we do probably a couple hundred of them.
Yeah, I can see that.
So, you know, so if you, if you're good, we don't have any problems with you, we don't go out to every single one.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So you'd have to probably get with Town, or Town Attorney Leclerc, no?
You already, you already looked at it.
Here.
It's already done.
So we have to do a public hearing.
Okay, so we have to put the public hearing together. But everything else has been done in paperwork-wise. Get the, okay, I thought that might be the case. Okay. All right, so then we would have to put a public hearing in for, might as well do it for our next meeting?
Well, there's a motion.
Motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that the North Branford Town Council schedules a public hearing for 7:30 PM on June 6th, 2023, to allow public comment on the potential revisions to Chapter 104 of the Code of Ordinances.
Okay.
Second.
A motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? All right. All right, that passes. We'll have a public hearing on that on June 6th. Okay. On to Item C, discussion in action of bid results for bid number 23104, Jerome Harrison Parking Lot. Michael, if you'd apprise us to that process.
I'm not sure. I think Mike Fumiati was having conversations with Councilor Angeloni on that.
Yes, so this, this is the, a bid went out. This is for, this was approved in last year's budget for the Board of Education, and the costs that were given to us at that time from the Board of Education was $90,000 for, to redo the, or fix the parking lot, because it's not a total redo of the parking lot. But it was an issue that they felt was a safety concern and presented it to us. We did approve the $90,000 based on the information that they gave us. That $90,000 cost was from a contractor who is not on the state contract list, so they couldn't just automatically award it to them, and they never put the contract, they never put it out to bid.
Put it out to bid, yeah.
So that that contractor could bid on it. It was brought up this year during one of our subcommittee meetings with the Board of Education. They were unaware that they had the money approved, so that's where the whole bid process started, which, you know, the, John Florio from the Board of Education had information that he gave to Mike Fumiati. Bid documents were drawn up, they put it out to bid, and the contractor that originally gave them the cost last year failed to meet the bid deadlines and never submitted a bid. And so the three bids that came in are well over the $90,000 figure that was given last year. So I would like to make a motion to collapse bid 23104, paving of the Jerome Harrison Parking Lot.
Second.
A motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
Yes, so the, the reason we're going to, you know, collapse the bid is just to end it so that we can restructure the bid and have Franny Marola and Dan Solentano from Public Works make sure that all of the correct things are being done in the bid specs.
Yep.
And reissue the bid specs and see once what happens with that.
When do we anticipate that taking place?
That'll be up to between the Board of Ed and Public Works.
All right, Dan, so you're in, you're already in conversation with them about this?
There are some pervisions there, remar sticking out.
Okay.
A little more scope than you can put in the bid.
Yeah, to do it right. Okay, that's good.
And actually make sure all of the areas that need to be addressed are in the bid spec.
Exactly.
Right? I mean, I know that was part of the problem also.
Do it partially, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Abelson?
So the three bids that we received, you said that they're well over? Are they like more than half?
Well, 178.5 is the lowest. It goes up from there.
A little bit.
Well, I think that's a...
Mike, Mike, so we approved this last year.
Right.
So maybe, what's the process for the, for the Board of Ed or any other board or commission? When we, when we approve money, maybe they didn't get the notice?
Well, I mean, it's an element of their CIP. They're supposed to know what's in their own CIP.
So I'm just wondering, is, maybe there's another way we can communicate with them to make sure they know that we award something or not award something?
Intend to have that project.
Well, I think what, we need to wait until the budget referendum happens first because the budget has to be approved first. But once it's finalized and we make the motion and, and everything is finalized, I do think that anything in the CIP budget, because we do move things around, just as a courtesy to all of the departments, that they just know that here's the project and this is what was approved.
Right. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Because it seems like they, they didn't know, you know, so I just wonder.
Yeah. I'll make sure they know.
I don't know, we have to send an email or...
I don't know.
Send a pigeon?
Pigeon could be sent.
We're going to go from $90,000 to...
I sent the current page out to all the departments.
You do? Okay. So Anthony just said that he does notify all the departments. Once the CIP is approved.
Okay.
He notifies all the departments.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay. All right, so we're going to move on from this. We're going to...
Do we have to take a vote?
Uh, we do have to take a vote to collapse, so you have...
We made the motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Obstained? All right, that collapses. On to Item D, discussion action intermunicipal annual control agreement. So tonight, we were going to have some action on this. There's been a little bit of change. Town Manager Downs and Mr. Esteban Zito and I were in a meeting on Friday. The Town of Branford did present, or did contact us to discuss working with North Branford, and obviously, we've had a longstanding relationship with, with the Town of Branford, and they'd asked that kindly, that we give them a moment to provide a proposal and review and possibly look at their facility. I thought it would be proper to give them that opportunity, and we set up some time to, they asked to come, come visit their facility. What, some of the changes that's taken place is they've agreed to relieve us of the duties that we had in the prior agreement for capital improvement, which I think we all felt was important, being that we're not owners of that particular facility. We are getting a service provided to us. They also have lowered the, the increase, and they had a baseline of, was it 157...
So we budgeted 175, according to their agreement, and they've lowered their proposal to 257.6, which is...
257?
No, 157.6. Yeah, I was going to say. Yeah, I said it was 157.9, 157.6.
They lowered it.
157,600.
And they, that represents what we paid in fiscal '22.
Correct.
So they would offer us to stay there and then index it beyond that at the CPI.
Correct. So something to consider, I saw an email going back and forth from one of our councilors that brought up, you know, a stute question of, are the services apples to apples? And I appreciated that. They're not necessarily apples to apples, but I think that was part of the consideration of going to visit and see the facilities and how they work, and I, I thought that was a fair ask of them. But I also didn't want to not give East Haven the opportunity to show us what they're doing. You know, we had a great presentation for them. Counselor, please.
If I can just, while we're on this, if I can just ask, if everybody else agrees to, if the Town Manager could possibly, the two dates that were given for East Haven was the fourth, which unfortunately is the same night as your, as your mother's services, and I know most of us want to attend that, and then the other one is the same night as Branford.
Yes.
Can we get a third date, maybe, to, that's more workable for us to go and view their facility?
I was thinking, it was, actually, it's written down, do you think, and again, I'll look her heads here, but maybe instead of two different nights, because I know we have a lot of different things that we do, and it's hard to get another day out to do something like that, at least for me, it's hard for me to get back here on consecutive nights. Maybe we can do it that night, that Monday night, on the, on the eighth, and do maybe like a...
A six and an eight.
A six and an eight, or six and 7:30, or even if I had to, a 4:30 and a six, or something where we can make it, we could do like a little bus trip, maybe we can even borrow...
I was going to say, go carpool.
Well, that, or we can candidly, we have the possibility of being carted around and what's that, one of the, well, they have the Parks and Rec, I mean, we have...
As long as, as long as it's a bus that doesn't require a CDL license.
Well, yeah.
Which I believe they do have one.
We do have one.
That you don't...
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Mr. Potter's offering a hayride.
Oh, a hayride. Oh, nice.
That's even better.
That, along with the towing of Mr. Downs and the future price.
Mr. Potter, remember, you said that, please.
Yeah. We're grateful of that offer, thank you. Yeah, but I'd like to see, maybe do it in one night, kind of do, and it's also, I think, easier to compare the two facilities by seeing them next to each other.
Right, and I would point out also that both facilities offered to make time for any council member that can't make a group tour, they could arrange individually for anyone who can't make that date.
So would you reach back out to them? Is the eighth good for everyone here? Show of heads, no?
For me.
Monday's usually okay.
I'm on vacation, so I can't make it.
Well, we'll view you in, of course. We'll FaceTime you in.
That night.
So...
Counselor Mace is going to get a dog, he's going to talk to him that day.
Yes, she can get a mouse.
Nice pit bull.
Maybe I look at things differently than everybody else, and I don't disagree with that, but it seems kind of suspicious that all of a sudden, we get a proposal from East Haven, and then all of a sudden Branford wants to relax all of these funds and work with us now. Why all of a sudden, if we didn't get the proposal from East Haven, Branford wasn't going to give us any breaks. I, I just don't, I've never got it differently.
Did somebody reach out to Branford to tell him?
I did. I reached out.
So I actually did reach out on it.
But originally, from what I understand, when we did this...
And they knew that we were...
They knew that this was going to happen, and they wanted nothing to do with this.
Well, they've, they've, they've rethought that process. It's obviously revenue stream for them, and they've done a great job.
I think at the end of the day, it's easy to, I do it all the time, it's easy to get caught up in that stuff, but I think the end of the day, we need to do what's right for the citizens and taxpayers.
Totally what's right for the, for the town. Okay, I understand that.
And I think if we need to look at, if we need to, I mean, it's a valid point that you're bringing up, I'm not discounting it, but I think we need to do our due diligence and take a look at both facilities and take a look at what they're proposing and the dollar amounts and...
That was my thought process as well.
Yeah, and then as a body, we decide what we want to do.
But I have no problems with that. It's just funny that Mr. Mace said that we've reached out to them, you've reached out to them, and they wanted nothing to do with us. And now, all of a sudden, they've changed their mind.
I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the case.
I would say, to be fair, it was public that we heard a, a presentation from East Haven. If I were Branford, I'm just saying, I probably would have, and I wanted to keep the agreement, I would have reached out quick, and that didn't happen. It took me reaching out to them last week to get to the point where we had the discussion. I had a phone call with the First Selectman, and it begot the modification, the meeting we had on Friday, and then the presented modification, which is in your folders today, and I emailed to all of you. So, you know, they, they did express an earnest interest in keeping the relationship going that we have had with them, and they made those concessions. Could I say that they would have ever made those concessions without another standing offer from a viable provider on the table? I can't say that, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to make judgments about their, about their judgment, so...
I'm not saying that you're not doing your job, and the fact that you reached out to them and gave them the opportunity, absolutely. Just to give them a heads up, I would say, that we're moving away from that, but all of a sudden, they've kind of changed.
Well, I thought it was important that we had a discussion with them, at least, you know, as this thing was on the table, so that's why I...
And the other thing is too, they have done a very good job.
Yeah, they've done a great job. We've, we've enjoyed a very good relationship with our, our neighbors to the south.
Yeah.
And, you know, in respect to that relationship, and candidly, the, the person who is really running that facility has a, a great admiration for North Branford, and, and, you know, their, their approach to the conversation was something I thought was respectful to give us both the opportunity to look at both offerings, and then we can have certainly all these things considered in our decision-making process. So I would, you know, encourage everyone to have an open mind and look at both facilities and figure out what's best for North Branford. Look at the numbers, because ultimately, this is another area where we're looking for, you know, ways to make things a little bit less expensive and still have the most robust service for North Branford. So that's what we're going to do, hopefully, so let us know about the eighth, if you would.
I will.